We'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Cindy Edwards. If you would please rise, followed by the invocation by Reverend Joel Churchwell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternally gracious God, we come on this wonderful day to acknowledge your presence in this space as this council yet again assembles to do the great work of caring for this great community. And again, on this day, we acknowledge one who has been appointed to serve another term, and that of Brian Jackson. We ask that you continue to give him wisdom, to continue to make the contributions necessary for the betterment of the community he has been elected to serve. We thank you for your wisdom and your creativity. We ask all this in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Churchwell. We'll now proceed with the oath-taking ceremony for Councilmember Brian H. Jackson and the Honorable Paul Harson will be administering the oath. And if you would go to the microphone. Did you have anyone you want to call up to hold for you?
Yeah, I should have.
Absolutely.
Family?
Absolutely.
Family?
I mistake your name.
I, Brian Henry Jackson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The office.
The office.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As councilman.
As councilman.
And maintain and uphold.
And maintain and uphold.
All the laws and regulations.
All the laws and regulations.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Counselor, entertain a motion now to adopt the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. Some moves.
Second.
A motion, a second, and discussion. Here and now, in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have the adoption of the minutes and the consent items. We have minutes from the August 12th, 2022 special meeting, and also the August 16th, 2022 regular meeting.
Move approval for the minutes for the special minutes for August 12th and the regular minutes for August 16th as presented.
Second.
And the consent items. Excuse me.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Here and now, in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Before we get going, I did want to make some comments real quick. Over the past several years, youth violence has been a problem across the whole of Onslow County. The events at Northwoods High School this past week emphasizes the need for our community to do something, to do more, to stop this. Anytime a child is sensibly loses their life, it affects the community. And our thoughts and prayers go out to the family that lost this young man. I know that many community members have asked how they can help to address these issues in our community. And as part of our commitment to our One City campaign, I'm asking the council to go along with me in endorsing a youth and gang prevention task force to be formed. I know that I was approached by Chief Inaro about it. I know Mr. Sewell, who's present today, he's also contacted me about it. And I know that Reverend Churchwell has also endorsed doing something about this. So what I'm asking tonight is for the council to approve, go forward with, you know, being a member of this task force, being part of the task force to address this problem. I think that there's a lot of resources in our community already. I think there's a lot of people in our community that are anxious to be involved and to try to put some type of end to this in our community. We just, we don't need this in our community. We don't want this in our community. So anything we can do as citizens would be a positive step. And I know that this has been successful in other areas. I know New Hanover County, I know Mr. Sewell supplied me with some information from down in their efforts down there. Now, they had a major problem with it for several years, and they seem to be making headway as far as stemming some of the tide of violence. I'll also be asking the city staff to work with our partners to create this task force and to identify any gaps, challenges, and issues with existing programs and services, and to create actionable recommendations for combating youth and gang violence. And with that, that's, if you all would agree with me, as far as consenting to endorse this program.
I'd like to say something. This morning, I was with a group of men that came out to Northside High School just to show support and welcome the children back to school. That was led by a program called MEAC. And they're actually at several schools within the county. They're a mentoring program. And it's just, they've been doing the work for over 10 years now. So I think what a lot of it comes down to is making sure you hear the voices of the people that's already out there doing the street, on the street, and then making sure we communicate together to do what's best for our communities. Because one of the things we don't want is an overreaction. We want a reaction. And we don't want all children to be criminalized because of a few. So, you know, we're willing, like I said, a lot of men have come forward, even more since now, since this situation happened. And unfortunately, sometimes it takes these situations to bring other people off the sidelines. So this organization is run by Dick and Ike Johnson. It was started by him, and Mary O. Harris has been taking up the will and a lot of things concerning that. So I hope that that's considered, because we, it comes down to mentoring. It's time for everybody to step up, but especially men. Because it don't really make any sense with all the prime military and everybody else that's here for us to even have a mentoring issue. So I just want to say that a little bit.
Thank you very much for that input. But we do have a lot of community partners that are ready, willing, and able to get involved. And like I said, we're going to make a commitment that we will provide necessary staff support to get this going, just like we did with the Dix crisis task force. I mean, same, basically the same mechanics involved in that. But, you know, as Mr. Jackson said, I mean, the whole object of this will not be to criminalize, but will be to give, to help find alternate routes to different behaviors. And I don't think anybody can argue that. So with that, I would ask staff to prepare a resolution for the council, if that's appropriate. Mr. Carter, you're, and we will put that resolution out there that council supports. If somebody want to make a motion now?
I'll make the motion that the Jacksonville City Council implement its first youth and gang task force in the city of Jacksonville, North Carolina.
Second.
Now, this doesn't belong to the city of Jacksonville now, it's just we are endorsing it. We want this to be a community-wide effort, bringing everybody together, all these agencies. I think I understand what you're saying, so we're good. But that is, that is the best way for it to work, is we get all our partners involved in it, you know, so.
I'll second the motion to support the effort.
The motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? Anybody want to add anything?
I think it's a fair idea.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. So with that, we're going to proceed on to, we have, Mr. Carter is going to present item number seven, and this is for utility and access easement off Commons Drive North.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city received a letter from John Pierce in reference to an access and a utility or a driveway easement across some Commons Drive North property, and I'm going to go over that here in just a moment, to the property that's owned by Leonard and Pauline Humphrey. They have a person who wants to buy this property and put a single-family residence there. So let me get to my map here. And we will try to do, we tried this earlier, and it worked. In 2004, the city did a condemnation of certain segments of property in this area, and I'll circle a couple of them here in a moment, that were, that belonged to an inactive homeowners' association. It was clear that the homeowners' association was not going to be organized. And through this condemnation action, the council acquired several pieces. This piece right here, you see there's no number on that, that was one of them. There's a piece right here along the side here that goes down. And this was acquired for $100. We've had many people, and there's others that are not displayed on this map, but this gives you the idea. There's others that are out there, too. There's several pieces. I would say six to eight, something in that neighborhood. We've had several folks come and want to buy that. And my answer has always been, well, through condemnation, it's very difficult to sell. You know, the city condemned it for a certain purpose, that is access and nature trails and so forth, and so we've never sold any. The first property that was changed, and I'm going to go up here and circle this again, that's this property here. Mr. Jimmy McCotter developed all these homes along Chastain Drive that comes out to Commons Drive. Well, Mr., give me a second here. I'm not getting it in the right place. Mr. McCotter's property stopped right up here, in this area right here. Alan, if you can clear it. So if Mr. McCotter, if the city had not agreed for him to extend Chastain Lane all the way out to Commons Drive, he would have had to put in a big cul-de-sac right here, and four, five, six of these properties would never have been developed. They would never have come on the tax roll. So again, this was the first thing that happened here, and that is, was a blessing, again, bringing, and this area here where Chastain Drive, if you remember, comes out to Commons Drive, it was an unkept area also. This also kept that, or made it more kept. Now, the green parcel is the 10 acres or so that the Humphreys own, and they want to allow someone to buy it and to put a single-family home on it. That's what it's zoned for right now. So let's go to this. This would, and again, this is all, you don't have to make a decision, but Mr. Pierce would like to have some consensus, the council would go along with this prior to going to the expense for the Humphreys or the prospective buyer and getting all this surveyed, et cetera. So that's why it's being brought for you as a discussion item tonight. So the concept would be, here in this hatched area, that this would be a 40-foot easement across city property that the city would give to the new owners of this property here, this 10-point acre, which is, that's represented by the green, a portion of it represented by the green section there. And in the easement that I've already kind of been drafting and putting conditions in, the language of this nature would be it, that the purpose of this easement would be to construct a driveway in accordance with city standards and for accessing city water and sewer after their said property is annexed into the city. Part of, party of the second part, that would be the persons that this would be easement given to, would obtain all necessary permits for driveway construction, water and sewer infrastructure, and they would specifically agree to annex this whole tract, this 10-acre tract, into the city prior to the recordation of this easement. Additionally, this property, this access is only given to this property for the construction of a single-family home. Again, this would be a protection for the Humphreys, as many of you know, live up on the front end there, and they don't want any further development except for a single-family home there. They live on Highway 17. It would also be a protection for the homeowners there. Again, it's not zoned for anything now except for what a single-family home is, or a rural agricultural zoning. It's not in the city presently, as you know, but it is in the ETJ, and therefore it has city zoning. So if there's questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them, but the purpose, again, is to give Mr. Pierce some direction. I will say that the council can grant an easement like this under these type conditions without going through the upset bid process. It is just, again, an easement, and there's other easements that have been given through time in different areas. But if the council is comfortable with it, if there's a consensus, then I'll relay that to Mr. Pierce, and he can actually, and this will, go ahead and do his surveying, and we would bring an actual document back for you to consider at a future meeting. If there's concerns, I think, you know, we want to probably stop right here, so that he and his clients, the buyer and the seller in this case, would not go to that expense.
Are there any postings required on this posting period? Okay.
Pretty hard to access a home without a driveway.
So I guess Mr. Carter is looking for a consensus. Is anybody not in favor of doing this, going forward with it?
Well, it's in my ward, my neighborhood, and along with the conditions that Mr. Carter has mentioned, I have no problem. I don't think the residents would have any problem with that either.
Everybody, all those in favor of giving consensus on this, raise your hand. I want to see a hand count. There we go. Mr. Pierce. With that, we're going to, we're going to recess for a few minutes, then we'll go into.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, tonight we'll continue our discussions on compensation, but before we review the compensation discussion, we're going to talk a little bit about fund balance. Sabrina is going to go through what we would normally call Fund Balance 101 to explain what the state law specifies in basically how you set aside certain funds in your fund balance for specific purposes, which ultimately then allows us to see what our unassigned fund balance is. So at this point, we'll just let Sabrina, our finance director, talk about fund balance.
Thank you for having me here this evening to give a brief course on our fund balance. I'd like to begin this discussion with going through a few important points about this discussion. This discussion is in reference to our FY22 general fund balance. However, these are, we are in the middle of our audit and financial statements currently, so these are unaudited numbers, which is important to know, and projected. It's where we are as of right now. There should not be any big changes, but it's not been audited. As of right now, we have a general fund balance of $40 million, 11,500. Of that, we, on our financial statements, we've raised that fund balance out into several different categories, five different ones. We have non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. And if you look at our financial statements in our annual financial report, those are the categories that everything would be broken down into for the general fund. So the first categories are non-spendable, and that is amounts that are either non-spendable because they're not in a spendable form. An example of that would be prepaid and inventory, which currently we have $96,000 in that category. And then our compensating balance, which is $10 million. That is an amount that's required contractually that we have to leave intact. It's for our bank. It's an account that's in our bank that helps us avoid, it keeps us from paying any bank fees. So we leave that $10 million with the bank. We can't spend it, and they don't charge us any banking fees. And our next category would be restricted. For us, we have three different amounts in that category. These are amounts that are either externally imposed by our creditors or restricted by law and legally enforceable, that we can only use them for specific purposes. So for us, we have our pow bill, which we know we can only use for a pow bill for our streets. And then we have our stabilization by state statute. That is a little bit of a complicated calculation that's required by the state that, after we do the calculation, that number, that $10 million, $8,000, that's the number that we're required legally to keep restricted, that we're unable to spend. And then we have our escrow, which is 2.18 million. That is the number that is in our escrow accounts for our debts.
The stabilization, stabilization fund, you say that's set by the state, and they have a particular formula. Is this what we used to think was the 8% that they required through the LGC?
Yeah, the 8% is sort of, it's a little bit of a myth that came about that really is not an 8%, although it's a number that was recommended, I think, at one point and has kind of stuck. But this is a number that we basically, can you unhide the slide for me? I did do a slide on it in case we wanted to see that later in detail. But we take the total fund balance that we have, and we back out the liabilities and encumbrances that we currently have. There we go. And then we take out the non-spendable fund balance, which is the $2,96,000 that we just seen. And then that number that is left is the amount that the state says that we have to leave restricted on our financial statements.
So that, does that have anything to do at all with the LGC's recommendation, nothing at all?
No, this is separate. So when we get into the discussion about what we have for our unrestricted fund balance or our fund balance policy, that's different.
That's really where they want to see their money. Yes, okay.
Okay. So then our next category is our committed category. This is a category, these amounts can only be committed by formal action of the city council, and they can also only be undone by formal action of the city council. And in our case, the only item that we have currently in that category on the general fund statements is a special separation allowance. So what that means is that it was formal action created this, and even if we decided to let appropriations lapse, it doesn't go away. It's still, the only way that it can be undone is by formal action by city council.
And that money is what exactly, this special separation allowance? I think I know, but...
This is the extra money that the police officers upon retirement receive.
Mr. Wood, that's only paid until the police officer gets the 62.
Supplements, health, safety, retirement.
But it is required by statute, right?
Yes.
And the numbers determined by natural, the real study?
Yes, we do have a study annually that makes sure that we are where we need to be.
How many do we have a draw from that pool right now?
Um, I can find out. I want to say, I don't really want to guess. It's not, it's not, you know, 50 people or anything like that. It's a smaller number, because once they do reach a certain age, they come off. But I can get the number for you. And then our next category is our assigned fund balance. This is fund balance that's not restricted, it's not committed, but we do intend to use it for a specific use. So for us, that is our appropriated fund balance for the following year. So right now, we're doing FY22 statements, this 3.5 million, that's the fund balance that we plan to use in FY23 for our budget. And then the star of the show, the one that everyone wanted to know, our unassigned fund balance right now, this is the amount that's not restricted, committed, it's not assigned to any other specific purpose, and right now that looks like it will be about 20.4 million.
Is that typical? Normally about half of the total fund balance is spendable?
It really varies. The last table that we were looking at from the LGC ranges, I think it was like 50% to 75 or 80, but it really is specific to the size, if you have an electric utility or not. And really is, I mean, it varies. It's kind of all over the place. But for our size and our group that we're compared to, that's average. I mean, it changes, it can change from year to year, and I think that's what this slide sort of is intended to show, that, you know, even in FY21, we had an unassigned fund balance of 15.4, and now, I mean, it's a significant difference for unassigned fund balance for 22. But this just shows since 2017, the amount that we've appropriated a fund balance in the budget each year, and then actually where we ended up. So that you can see in '21 was the only year, even though we were appropriating around, well, between $2 and $3 million each year, we only spent fund balance in '21. And we've added to fund balance every year, although for '22, we are projected to add a little bit less than we have been. It was between 20 and 25, a different time. Do you have any questions on the fund balance?
So we just wanted to go on and talk about what are...
Mr. Wood, that's only paid until the police officer gets the eighty-sixty-two.
Supplements, health, safety, retirement.
But it is required by statute, right?
Yes, it is required by statute.
And the numbers determined by natural, the real study?
Yes, we do have a study annually that makes sure that we are where we need to be.
How many do we have drawing from that pool right now?
Um, Kayla, did you happen to know? I, I can find out. I want to say, I don't really want to guess. It's not, it's not, you know, fifty people or anything like that. It's a smaller number because once they do reach a certain age, they come off. But I can get the number for you. And then our next category is our assigned fund balance. This is fund balance that's not restricted, it's not committed, but we do intend to use it for a specific use. So for us, that is our appropriated fund balance for the following year. So right now, we're doing FY '22 statements, this three point five million, that's the fund balance that we plan to use in FY '23 for our budget. And then the star of the show, the one that everyone wanted to know, our unassigned fund balance right now, this is the amount that's not restricted, committed, it's not assigned to any other specific purpose, and right now that looks like it will be about twenty point four million.
Is that typical? Normally about half of the total fund balance is spendable?
It really varies. The last table that we were looking at from the LGC ranges, I think it was like fifty percent to seventy-five or eighty, but it really is specific to the size, if you have an electric utility or not. And really is, I mean, it varies. It's kind of all over the place. But for our size and our group that we're compared to, that's average. I mean, it changes, it can change from year to year, and I think that's what this slide sort of is intended to show, that, you know, even in FY '21, we had an unassigned fund balance of fifteen point four, and now, I mean, it's a significant difference for unassigned fund balance for '22. But this just shows since 2017, the amount that we've appropriated of fund balance in the budget each year, and then actually where we ended up. So that you can see in '21 was the only year, even though we were appropriating around, well, between two and three million each year, we only spent fund balance in '21. And we've added to fund balance every year, although for '22, we are projected to add a little bit less than we have been. It was between twenty and twenty-five, a different time. Do you have any questions on the fund balance?
We just wanted to go on and talk about what are some of the expected identified needs that we've got to keep in mind as we go forward. One is obviously our compensation discussion. We talked at last meeting about Station Four. Hopefully, with that fire tax rebate that we get from the county, that'll be a source of revenue, about one point three million dollars a year. We've got a four million dollar shortfall right now in that budget for that capital project, and hopefully, we'll be able to just put that fire tax money as a source of what we need to make up that shortfall. We talked about ladder, the ladder truck, we're now estimating with October pricing, that's about, could be maybe one point nine million dollars. We went in, we applied for a grant, a FEMA grant, is it?
Yes, sir.
We haven't gotten the final word back that FEMA has started releasing results, but they're, you know, it's not the total list of who's getting funding. So we'll just have to wait until they release all the results to know about that. Of course, we've talked about, we're in the process of putting together the RFP for the Enterprise Resource System. And that's somewhere, we think possibly four to six million. But of course, some of that may end up, you know, being annual costs associated with it. We'll have to see, you know, but after we actually bid that, what the results are. And then obviously, we always have hurricane season, and that's something that we've got to plan our fund balance to, in anticipation, we may need to have to fund some of the recovery operations before we get FEMA reimbursement. One of the things, of course, we've talked about is we built this current year's budget is what's happening with fuel prices. This just shows, you know, some of that money that we added to fund balance, like in fiscal year '21, you know, we had six hundred thousand dollars that we didn't spend on fuel. This past year, that number's more like three hundred thousand dollars, and of course, it increased what we budgeted for fuel. We increased again this year. Right now, we're probably close to what budget is and what we're seeing fuel prices. Diesel's is still very high. Unletted's come down, but again, that's another factor that's out there. Another thing with equipment, like we, this budget, we had projected to replace forty-two pieces of equipment. So far, we've actually received pricing on sixteen of those pieces. We budgeted one point eight million for those sixteen pieces. The actual pricing came in as one point eight seven two million, about seventy-two thousand dollars more for those items of equipment. We're still, we still haven't gotten the final pricing in for the remaining items. Of course, some of that money, the money for those seventy-two million came out of the existing budget. Departments had to identify whether, where they could do, make some reduction and cover the cost of their equipment. So some of the considerations, you know, I looked back through previous council minutes, and back in 2018, we sort of had a discussion, and the consensus on the part of the council was fund balance, we ought to shoot for twenty percent. One of the, one of the problems that we've had up to this point is twenty percent of what? You know, we were talking before about our unassigned fund balance was actually about fifty percent of the total fund balance. So it's like, is it twenty percent of your general fund budget? You know, I think at the time, we, that's kind of what the thought was. We were saying twenty percent of the general fund budget. The reason I'm saying this is that we need to have a discussion. Finance would really like to see us have a more specific policy on what the unassigned fund balance should be. This isn't the meeting that we need to talk about that, but that's a future discussion to actually agree on. We want a fund balance, an unassigned fund balance based on total fund balance. We want an unassigned fund balance based on general fund budget, and whether or not we want just one target percentage, or whether we might want something like DOT has with their road funding, where they have a minimum level and a max level, and you operate in a range. But again, that's, that's a future discussion. Of course, some of the other considerations, obviously operating expenses, we saw right now with the inflation, so our operating expenses are increasing. Revenue shortfalls, I mean, you know, you never know whether you're going to generate everything you project in your budget. There, you know, we've talked, I've talked to some council members about sales tax. Well, like the year before last, I think our sales tax increase was like sixteen percent. But, you know, some of that is due to what the legislature has done to actually expand charging sales tax on services. So, you know, unless the legislature keeps doing that, you may not see increases like we saw two years ago with sixteen percent. And we have, to this point, have been conservative in estimating what both our property tax will be and our sales tax. So what that does is that causes you to appropriate more fund balance to balance your budget when that happens. And of course, we've already talked about emergencies, national disasters, and that. But those are all just things that, that we need to keep in mind when we look at being able to spend some of our fund balance. So at this point, this is the end of our discussions on fund balance, unless there are any questions. And we'll transition now to discussions on compensation. Any questions, Council? Thanks, Sabrina. Kimberly.
Mayor Council, thank you again for having us to talk about comp. I'm going to go over some slides with you, much of the information you've seen, but I know that there's been requests for some options. So we'll bring up a couple of options, and then I've got our expert, Tom, who'll be here in case we have some specific questions about some of the numbers. So with that said, I want to just remind everybody about the strategy we adopted. So we agreed on who our competitive market is through the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and we decided the target of that market would be average salary of our peer cohort. And we do that analysis, and the good news with that is every year, we can come up and tell you where we are against that cohort, so that every year, we can maintain that competitive, hopefully, advantage in the near future. So we've come up with three options, and we'll go over the methodology for each option, and then the impact of each option. So the first one is what you heard before, which the price tag on that was two point six million, so I'm just going to refresh your memory, that we would adjust the pay scale by ten percent. We would do, apply a percentage for every year in position, and a percentage for every year in service with the City of Jacksonville. And that, of course, that equation helped us evaluate internal equity and compression, but also, we, from an internal perspective, one of the things we want to do is minimize compression, right, and make sure we don't have any internal equity issues, but also make sure we're competitive externally. This is the greatest impact of all three options. It's the two point six million we discussed at the last meeting. It does allow us to be internally equitable, it does reduce the compression, and it does make us positioned to be externally competitive. Again, I must remind us that that is against the 2021 numbers, and we know that the market has moved, and so it's going to be great to come back again after we get those new numbers and tell you how well we've done. This will provide for increases for just over four hundred employees, and eighty-nine employees currently are positioned appropriately and no adjustments are needed. What does that mean? Well, we know who our competitive group is, and we know we want to be at the average pay for that group. Well, the good news is that we have at least eighty-nine employees in the organization that are positioned effectively. That's because of much of the, as you remember, in the past couple of years, you had given us a chunk of money to do some, some changes to those most in need. And so obviously, although the money wasn't enough to cover the entire organization, it did cover certain groups that were our highest risk for losing. So it did make effect to many. As you can see, eighty-nine would not be getting increases through this process with the two point six million. But all employees will be at least twenty percent into the pay grade range that they currently sit in, which is good news, right? Because we're trying to be competitive, and that will allow us to do so, and it does get us close to that average mark.
What was the majority of that eighty-nine? What departments?
Public Services and Human Resources. Tom, were there any others?
It's primarily Public Services and some of the...
Parks.
Police as well.
We can get you that if you'd like to see that.
Thank you.
So with that said, that was option one, and you had seen that option previously. We were asked to come up with a couple of options, so we'll give you two others. Option two's methodology is the same. We're applying the same methodology. We're removing employees that were impacted by the step pay increase. So remember when we voted, I'm sure you do, with the five thousand, five hundred? So those employees would be removed in this methodology, and if we did that, then the impact would be four hundred thousand dollars less, so it'd be two point two million. You would see increases for over three hundred and fifty employees. There would be no increase for a hundred and seventy-eight. Those are the employees that were not increased in option one, but then also take into consideration these others that are on step, and that would be police officers, one, two, all corporals and trainees, and telecommunicators, one, two, three, and trainees. Again, those that were impacted by the move previously. So obviously, a lot of your public safety would not be getting increases. I would say, from an HR perspective, we are giving you three options. Of course, I think you know we're recommending option one. I want to go on record and say that before I get a whole lot of calls. So this, the methodology with this option, this is option three. So we've given you option one, which is what we came to you with before, option two, which takes those, mostly those in the step, and all corporals out, and because of the increase they had already received that you had voted on and we implemented. And then this is option three. What is option three? Basically the same thing, but just skinny down, right? So we are using a multiplier, but it's reduced. So that cost reduction would be one million, so it wouldn't be two point six million, but one point six million. It would provide for increases for over three hundred employees. There would be no increase for forty percent of the organization, which is two hundred and thirty-seven employees. So those are your three options. Obviously, this one would be least effective, right, in certainly getting to your adopted strategy, which is to be at the average pay of your competitive group. And we would not be able to fix a lot of the internal equity issues or the compression that exists right now. Those are our, those are our three options, and we can certainly take any questions.
Do we have information on how, we obviously, clearly, let me preface this. We know that we need to have stabilization funds. We know Florence cost us nine million dollars and took three years to get that money back, so we don't want to dip, you know, to go skinny dipping in the general fund to the point we put things at risk, obviously. But there's enough in that unrestricted or unassigned balance that we could cover this year or the remainder of this year with option one. The challenge becomes funding option one next year. Is there a plan that, you know, like what would come out of utilities, and where could we expect to make shifts? How do we make it work in consecutive years? This year's not a problem, I don't think, for anybody in terms of it being accessible or feasible. The big hairy question is, can we keep it up? And how do we do that?
Can you put back the fund balance summary by years?
Yes.
While he's finding that, our hope would be that the market didn't move as much as we have heard, and that maybe they moved three to five percent, which would minimize that. That would be a question for Ron.
Yeah, and that was the gist of it. I know, you know, we have annexed properties that will be developed, so that will add to tax base, not day one, but over time. We have, you know, there's some things that we know will come, but we don't have guarantees on how quickly some of that will come. So we need to make sure that we're not, you know, putting ourselves, I'm off four, taking care of this problem that has grown over a decade, and I think everybody knows that, but we don't want to put ourselves in a hurt locker year two or year three. So we need to make sure we're not pulling from the general fund to cover, you know, all of year two and all of year three for the increase.
Question I have is, you've given us the numbers, but that's citywide, across all funds. What we're looking at is really from a general funds standpoint, because as you know, our enterprise funds will handle that internally. What is, what is that? There you go, okay. Thank you.
So we have a total of five hundred and thirty-seven employees? Is that correct? Current is five hundred and sixty-one employees. We have, we have five sixty-one. So looking at option one, if we're talking about just a little over four hundred individuals receiving compensation and eighty-nine would not, when would that eighty-nine be added to the pool? Would that be two years down the line, three years down the line? Exactly when will we no longer see just a little over four hundred, but all of our city employees?
So that would be based on whether or not they're meeting for their position, your target, the average of your peer group. So next year, they would be measured again against the peer cohort to see if they meet the average of that group or not. So now, when we talked before, my understanding was we were going to do a cost of living and also another increase based on merit or performance. So if there's a cost of living increase given by the council next year, they would be part of that pool, obviously. But where they would get increases would depend upon where they sit against the average of the market on a regular basis. But I understand, and I certainly don't want to put words in your mouth, I understand that, that when we talked before, that you had elected to look at salary increases in two ways, not just cost of living, but also performance factor. So in my, my understanding is, if it is, a cost of living is a piece of that, then they would obviously receive an increase next year with the cost of living if it were...
Did they get an increase this year in the cost of living, that ninety-six?
Yes, yes, sir.
Just remember now, though, let's say you go with option one, and you're pulling one point eight million out of the general fund, you're committing to say next year, you know it's, you've already paying them one point eight, we're increasing our total salary. So that's one point eight right off the top, you know, on top of, and where does that come from? Well, the options, and if you go, if we know we've increased our payroll by one point eight, now we've, now we've got to measure ourselves against the new numbers that have come out. So there's going to be some increase there. So how much, how much is our tax base going to grow? Is it going to grow one point eight? It has to grow at least one point eight, or we'd start taking money out of general fund again. So just, just something to think about.
Well, the general rule of thumb is to not use, not use one-time money for recurring expenses, not use it out of your fund balance. The problem I see is at some point, you're going to deplete such an amount of your fund balance that you're not going to want to bump that up anymore, and then, then you're stuck because you raise these, these wages up this high. So your only option is what?
You'll have to start reducing services.
I see it that way, and that's not, that's not a very pretty picture either.
How many employees are we short?
Right now, we have seventy-eight vacancies, forty-two of those are full-time, thirty-six are part-time. We have lost, in the month of August, thirty-five employees. Now nineteen of those were temps. Some of those temps obviously went back to school. So that was sixteen, so every other day, we're losing someone. That doesn't necessarily mean it was all for money. I don't know that yet.
And, you know, and that's an issue altogether, because we can't measure morale, or have you tried to figure out how to measure it, you know, because I know everybody's probably not leaving for money. But what are we going to... But what are we going to do to assess other options other than just money?
Probably like days off and things like that. I hope we add the other stuff to help out with that part. Because there's going to be some people, no matter how much you make, there's never going to be another. I mean, money's not going to fix all problems, but it obviously would help.
Yeah, it's going to help, but at the same time, if morale is down, and we don't know that.
Yeah.
You know, if there are other issues there where people are leaving, and it's not just money, then we need to fix that. Because then you talk about a culture.
We do exit surveys with all of the employees, and those are provided to the department head and to the city manager for review. And certainly with Dr. Woodruff, and I know with Mr. Massey, those individuals that have left for a reason that, you know, they, that can be identified, and some training opportunities around it with leadership or whatever is always addressed. It's not like it goes not noticed, but we can always do stay surveys. We can always survey the employees that are here and talk to them about the culture and match that against the exit surveys. We can do that work.
But an environment, you know, definitely has to be cultivated. If it's not there, I don't know where the employees can feel okay with being honest about those things. And you're talking about exit interviews, and in a lot of cases, I think we talked about this before, they're scared about getting a negative reference if they're saying something negative about their job they're leaving. So is that an honest assessment? I mean, can they, I don't know, I'm not an HR person. But what other, you know, what other ways can we start making sure that, I don't know if you have a box that you can drop information in unanimously? I don't, I don't know.
We had that survey not too long ago.
Yeah, that was a one-time event, but if possible, what I would like to see, just from a council perspective, considering the fact that we might be dealing with this for the next year, at least a monthly report to let us see where the bleed is and which department. Where are we losing people to have, just to have an annual report? These many individuals are leaving the city, and we noticed the trend was in this particular department, but now we're standing in this particular department. I had another question that I wanted to ask. With regards to the COLA and the work performance, can you explain a little bit more about the work performance and how that is assigned to employees?
Well, for one, we, I can tell you what we used to do.
Okay.
I can tell you what we did, you know, in 2008, 2009. We basically, employees received a rating. And within their rating unit, they were normalized. So on the scale of, you know, one to five, five being the max, three being average employee, they basically, you know, if 5%, say for example, was available for a pay increase, then you basically, depending on your normalized score, got somewhere between three and five percent, you know, of an increase. That, that particular aspect of the, of the compensation plan is what allows employees to move through the range based on gaining additional experience in their position.
Next question. Do employees have the privilege to participate in their evaluation process? In other words, if I know that I'm going to be rated on 10 indicators, do I have the option as an employee to be able to show my department director all of the things that I have done over the past year? So when we're sitting down with my annual report with indicator number one, let's just say if a director says, well, I have rated you as a three. And because I've rated you as a three, I'm just saying, for example, you do not qualify for a work performance increase, but I'm able to show that for indicators one through 10, these are all the things that I have done, so that not only have I met, I've actually surpassed.
Does that happen? So we, the employees have the option to do a self-evaluation? So they will complete an evaluation on the same, as you mentioned, indicators as their supervisors? And then they will get together and have a discussion? And often, some of those scores, before it's finalized into Human Resources, will change based on the comparison of both of those evaluations. And then they both become part of their record.
So my next question is, what if an employee is being a self-advocate? And there is a discrepancy from what the employee sees versus what the director sees? Then if there is a discrepancy, does the employee have an opportunity to take it to a next step for someone else? Or somebody else's to actually, to see the discrepancy that they're talking about? And the reason that I say that is because sometimes you may have an employee that does not have a very working, working well relationship with their supervisors. And sometimes supervisors may not do the right thing. And because it's subjective, they can decide, well, for this employee, I'm not going to do anything for that employee, but for this employee, well, because you didn't get a very good raise, or because your salary is kind of low, I can award a performance on the back end now to increase your salary. I'm just saying.
Well, I certainly hope that wouldn't happen. I'd like to think that the leaders in this organization practice what we teach them in training on performance evaluations. As you know, we've moved to a new product through NeoGov, our performance model. So it allows for a much more effective and efficient model. It also allowed us to be able to sit down and train all of the leaders. We have someone that leads that on our Human Resources team. But as an example, and I see Chief Yonero sitting right behind you. I'll just use his department as an example. By the time that chief reviews the evaluations, they've been through, in his case, two, three, four levels of supervisors that have read the evaluation and had discussion with the person that created the evaluation, and they ask for examples of those behaviors. Then it goes to the next level. So that employee will not sit down and have that conversation until that review has been seen by several supervisors. In particular, I'm talking about the Police Department, because they have those levels of supervisors in that case. At the point that the director has reviewed it and signed off on it, then the employee would sit down and have the conversation with their supervisor. And I'm, based on the training, it's a, it's a two-way conversation. So they get to do their self-eval, their supervisor does the evaluation, then that starts to move up the chain.
Okay. I just have another question. I'm just, just thinking about some things. Say, for example, when someone is hired, there is a job description that specifically will get, will at, will state what qualifications you must have, if there is any type of formal education beyond a high school diploma, et cetera, et cetera. So you have someone, let's just say, for example, I think I used this analogy before, that might be working in the Parks Department. But that particular person is, decided that they wanted to go back to school and formally learn Spanish. So they acquire a Spanish degree, but their job description does not call for them to actually have a degree in a foreign language. But because the supervisor now knows that they have a bilingual person on staff, a new program is starting out at the Commons, and we're starting to see more bilingual individuals coming in. So the supervisor often calls on this person to step in, to use those particular skills, but it wasn't required when they were hired. So how then would that person be compensated for a skill set they've, they actually acquired, but it was never part of the job description? Would that job description be repurposed for that individual to be able to have their salary increased?
So we wouldn't change a job description, right? Because unless it was a unique contributor, a unique position. But what we would do is, we would, I hope, recognize someone for adding value. So for example, you had mentioned the 10 indicators that would be evaluated against for their performance evaluation. One of those is communication in everybody's performance evaluation. So I would hope if that person was being considered a three in communication and is doing this additional work well beyond what they would be required in a job description, then they're going above and beyond the requirements of the position. So I would assume they'd get a five in that evaluation, just as an example. So that is one way. The other way is our performance award process. When we do the Performance Plus, so if someone goes above and beyond, and I'll use in my office Nancy Ortiz as an example. Nancy is bilingual, and she helps other departments with documents. I provide her a performance award. We get to recognize that performance. And that is a one-time lump sum that she will get for doing work that wasn't required in her normal job description. So that would happen on a regular basis, it happens. So those are two different ways that we could recognize performance.
Does she do that on a regular basis?
We have a lot of bilingual individuals now, so not as much as she used to, but, but yes. And then also passports, she does passports. So we make sure that that's being recognized as well, because it's not part of a regular job description.
For clarification purposes, let me ask you this. So you're saying that you do the WPAs now, based on
Work Performance Awards?
A one-time, you know, achievement of some sort, such as what she's mentioning there about wanting to get your Spanish degree or something like that. Now, you were talking about the evaluation. And Ron, you mentioned in 2008, 2009, we did this. Do you still tie the evaluation to pay?
No.
Since 2010, we have not.
And since I've been here, I came in 2012, no. We tried to move to a pay-for-performance model, and it didn't go over well.
So whether I make a one or a five, it doesn't make any difference what my
You get a cost of living.
Cost of living.
And that's when we showed you those slides before, and what generated this conversation on compensation is because your employees are exactly where they were. A cost of living keeps them whole, it doesn't move them ahead. And that's why 10 years later, we're in the situation that we're in.
Just one thing, if somebody gets below a three, they're actually, you know, tried, we try to improve their performance, because the objective is to have every employee perform at least at an average level of performance.
But it doesn't cost them any money.
No. It may cost them their job if they don't respond to the, to the performance improvement.
Now, the money, it was, there was, there was a figure, I want to say it was 1.1 billion, that was available as a result of the revow.
Yes, yes, let me just go to another slide here. This is, this is what you were talking about. That, that, the tax rate that council set produced 3.27 billion dollars worth of revenue.
What are those other adjustments?
Well, the majority of that was, was basically the pay adjustments.
Okay.
That's to fund the step increase that we paid, to fund the, the, all the pay adjustments. I mean, there was like, the only thing that wasn't pay adjustment was like 40, 40-some thousand dollars for other. So in reality, incorporated in your budget is 1.66, you know, 388. Now, what that meant is that when you go back and look at that five-year chart, it reduced how much, how much general fund balance that we basically put in the, in the budget this year. We approved in the budget. Let me just show you an example. You see how that, that 3.5 million dollars? That, that originally, when we went into the budget, was almost 5 million dollars. So you, that 1.1 decrease is that money that we didn't have to use from fund balance because we increased the tax rate. So, so that's, that's sort of in the budget right now.
Now, was that, was that, okay, those were used for one-time things, though, right? Or were they, or those recurring events also?
Well, that, if we end up spending that money now, you know, we commit it to salaries, what that means is, you know, if we build the budget the same way next year, our fund balance need is going to be about 5 million dollars. If we, if we improve a salary increase right now, we're going to increase our, you know, commit our appropriated fund balance by whatever amount is needed for the pay increase that we would vote on now.
Can you go back to the option one slide? Let me talk about the eight, any time.
See, and again, you know
Option one.
One of the reasons we're in this situation with 89 employees is that because we did selective adjustments. Instead of, instead of, you know, adjusting
Across the board.
Across the board.
As I said.
You know, so some specialties got some adjustments, some didn't. And, and now we're at the point where we're trying to bring everybody to an equitable position. And that's, we have to basically cross this bridge.
So how many would be to the industry standard? And, and how many would be based on COLA?
Well, this is all, this is all just to get your equitable pay. This has got nothing to do with COLA, this adjustment.
That's the guess I made.
This is, this is basically to just
To meet your strategy of being at the average of that market per each position.
And, and placing them equitably compared to their contemporaries.
Yes.
Looking at your crystal ball, if you go for option one, your fund balance is still higher than it was in 2017. You see anything in the crystal ball that would tell me that we should back off on that figure because of anticipated or unanticipated plays on the unassigned fund balance?
Should we have Sabrina come back to the table?
Do you mind coming back to the table?
Sit here so you can see, you don't have to look around me.
The history has been, as far as I can remember, finance does a great job, but they're very conservative, and the fund balance always increases. And the sales tax revenue, as far as I can recall, we've always exceeded what we budgeted. Have I seen anything wrong with that crystal ball?
I don't have a crystal ball. And I, I do know that we are very conservative. The only thing that I will say is hurricanes.
Say what?
Hurricanes.
How much did Florence cost?
Nine million. Up just for debris removal was nine million.
And then we eventually get that paid back at some point, but it takes a while. You end up having to carry it through a number of years.
How long did it take, three years?
Did we lose anything on it?
Well, we're still waiting for the final payment.
Over a million dollars, we're still waiting.
Well, we anticipate full recovery.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's three years, right?
Yeah, there's a few areas, you know, where, you know, they kind of cut it short kind of thing. And when you actually put in your, your claim, you know, the final for payment, they nickel-dime you on stuff like that. But for the most part, you know, the bulk of the, the money gets reimbursed.
To your point, Mr. Ben, if you leave the stability funds, plus a little, and 9 million dollars for another Florence-type of event that we have to outlay and wait to get back in a couple of years, two or three years, we still have room. And I, you know, I know that this is a difficulty.
No, the stability needs to stay put, is what I'm saying.
Or it doesn't come out of the outside.
Well, what do you call it, the
There's another term, the balance that you want to keep in there.
I tend to kind of see things, and I saw them before, it's, it's difficult to go 10 to 12 years with no pay increases, to have the inequities because of potshots to try to fix problems and not deal with the problem. I know it's a big problem, I know it's a big number. But we're not going to get over the hump unless we do something to bring the equity. With increase in, the, the increase With increase, the increase we saw in the tax values this year, that additional funding will be there next year. It's not going to go away. So, that piece is, will be repeated. We have 1.1 million of it left now. And we will have, what was the total increase, three, 3-point-something?
3-point-2.
That will be in your budget next year. You won't get the same amount of property taxes from the rate increase this year next year.
Well, that money you're talking about, that, that other
2.6 is not in there.
Yeah, that other adjustments is still going to continue too, right?
Yeah, 2.6 is not in there.
That's true. So, you have the 1.1.
But, you know, one thing is our, our fund balance, unassigned fund balance is basically built on jobs not being filled or positions being filled during the year and fuel prices, which, you know, we've had a really wonderful year of fuel prices. I don't know, I can't remember what we budgeted per gallon this year.
Yeah, we, well, we, we banked $300,000 this year. Last year, we banked $600,000.
And you budgeted in excess of what we're paying now currently?
Yes.
You budgeted for 20, for 23, more than what we're paying.
We increased it further in '23. And like I said, we're, we're close to even. We haven't overspent, but, you know, we're not through the year yet.
The fly in the ointment is if we do a good job in terms of bringing salaries up to, up to par and comparable with other municipalities, we're going to decrease the salary account in terms of not filling positions for the year because we're, we're going to keep those people, hopefully, right?
That's the hope, sir.
That's another problem. That'd be a nice problem to have.
You know, something you got to be aware of.
Another cost that's not in these figures is what it costs us every time we lose someone that we've trained for three months, six months, or a year. So, you know, I know we've discussed police department, not picking on the police department, but I heard numbers as high as $100,000 to fully train and equip an officer. And if they work for us just well enough to get trained and then leave to go somewhere else for pay, we just flushed $100,000 on top of that salary or including the salary, I'm sure, but that's a lot of cash that's going out the door that we don't get back. And we have to start all over at square one with a new rookie.
Well, I totally agree with you on that, but again, what, what do we have to put with this 1.1? What was the bottom line on that? Another one?
2.6.
1.5.
1.5 because of total 2.6.
1.5, how much in the general, how much of that's general fund money? 1.3?
This is for October implementation.
Okay, go back one. There it is. So, we, that's about, about 700?
700,000 dollars.
Yeah, a little less, yeah, about 660. And that's the annual cost, that's the full year cost.
So, if we implement it in October, obviously, there's a different number.
Yeah, I mean, here's a, like, for example, if, if we, if we were to implement it in the first pay period or the, the 9th of October, when that pay period starts, that's the number that we'd have to deal with for this year.
Well, in my opinion, that's going to be, in my opinion, since we're using that money that we had from the reappraisal, with that and adding 700,000 dollars, I don't have any heartburn with that. I mean, that's, I think that's reasonable. You know, of course, that's just 100,000 or 70,000 of general fund, but of course, you'll dig the rest off a little bit too. But I don't, I don't see that as being, you know, we'll know after a year or two, won't we? When are you going to implement this? If we say yes tonight, when's the implementation due?
October 9.
We started, we started with the pay period, it begins on October 9, and that's
October 8. This'll be starting, not retro. You got a quarter of the year?
Well, I mean, that's council's choice, but this is
You got a quarter of the year money making that less than 2.6, right?
That's about right.
Yes.
25%?
Yes.
Is this an addition to the COLA? Is this an addition to the COLA?
Yes.
This is an addition to the COLA.
And if, I have a question. And if we approve, let's just say we went with option one, for those 400-some-odd employees, every one of them would receive their raise, correct?
Yes.
So, no department head could say, I don't want this person to receive this. Everyone would receive, if, if it is council's direction, then everyone should receive some type of human resources summary for a personnel action, an increase in salary that prior to October 8, your salary was this amount of money and as of October 8, your new personnel summary will say, this is your new salary going forward.
The only comment I would make is if a person that got a performance appraisal less than three, that's already on record, I don't know whether that's
We have a policy Wait a minute, hold on, say that again, please, sir.
Is someone who had gotten a performance appraisal of less than 3.0.
So, now we're saying if their performance was less than a three, they would not receive this?
Well, I'm saying that, you know, you have to be careful from a personnel management standpoint, you know, if you're saying employee is not performing up to snuff, that you make an adjustment to their salary.
No, 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 that's, that's not what I was saying. That's not what I was saying at all. But I'm saying if, if council approves this, then no one can rescind this decision. Those 400-some-odd employees that have been identified by human resources, they would receive this.
What I'm saying is if council directs that every employee, no matter what their performance appraisal was, you know, then yes.
So, now it's tied to performance appraisal?
Well, but I'm just saying that we currently have a policy that says when somebody scores less than three, they have to go through a performance appraisal process or a performance improvement process. And, and the question is, until they've satisfactorily done that, do you want to increase their compensation?
I think what Mr. Massey's referring to is we have a policy that says that employees that are on a performance improvement plan or a development plan do not get considered for increases or promotion or transfers. So, there's a policy that's in place for that. So, I think what he's saying is we don't want to violate that policy by giving an increase. However, I think you're, you're talking, you know
Yeah, just a handful of people.
Well, I agree, I mean, I think
Yeah, I wasn't even talking about, I wasn't even talking about that, so I
Just trying to get understanding.
Maybe we're misunderstanding.
Well, I kind of see, but I see where you're coming from, but I also see where you're coming from too.
So, this, so this really is contingent
It's following our policy.
Upon your performance appraisal.
Right. Well, it's, it's having a satisfactory performance appraisal.
So, it's contingent upon your performance appraisal, if it's less than a three, you will not receive it?
If, if council supports our current policy
Kimberly's shaking her head.
Yeah, so
That's been, that's been the basic one.
This is based on average pay for your peer cohort and everyone's salary's been affected by that. On the rare case, and I think there's maybe three, in the entire organization of close to 600 people, if you're on a development plan because you're not performing at that level you need to, to be proficient in your job, then there is a policy that says you don't get salary increases, whether it's this one or the cost of living or anything.
Now, we understand that because before, we didn't think it was a tie to it, but I do understand where you're coming from.
You almost have someone on probation. I'm assuming when they finish that plan, that they would receive whatever they were entitled.
Not even on probation, you can have, but, okay, so here's my other question. So, if that individual goes through and completes that PIP, my first question, how long is the PIP? Is it for three months? Is it for six months? Is it for six weeks? How long would that PIP be? And at the end, if the individual is showing satisfactory, would then that raise be retroactivated? Or, or at that point moving forward? What does our policy say about that?
So, the timeframe you're referring to, it could be any of those. So, it's 30-day, 60-day, 90-day is typically what a performance improvement plan is, and it's designated in the plan depending on what we're trying to develop. I don't know where we are on whether or not they'd get an increase after that. I would assume that they would. And quite honestly, if they're on a 60-day plan, we're going to be in budget cycle for cost of living in December and January. So, I would have to review that. I would assume that they would get that. I don't know about the retro piece, I'd have to review policy.
Okay, so there's
We've never done an out-of-cycle increase to this, like this, in, from my understanding. So, I don't know. I would have to review that policy.
Can you let us know?
Sure, absolutely.
See, I mean, to me, you know, council specifies when we do pay raises, who it applies to. And my point for raising that is you asked if everybody, and my answer would be, I would qualify that to not violate our personnel policy. I mean, that's, that's my point.
I get that, but we didn't understand that before. We, we didn't know about that because I remember the mayor said if it was one to five, it doesn't matter. So, now we got a better understanding, you know, that it is tied to it.
We ready for a motion? I want to make a motion to move for funding option one, which my calculation indicated would take about $2 million out of the fund balance for the remainder of the fiscal year, assuming October implementation date.
I'll second.
You have a motion and second. I got a question here in discussion. On the water and sewer, on option one, it's 210,495 dollars out of that fund. What kind of impact is that going to have on rates? Have you looked at that?
We have, we did not look at the remodel.
Is it going to have an impact on rates?
I, I think that amount, not
I mean, of course, you know, some of the benefit we, you know, we're reaping from the funding that we've got for some of our projects and that, so that's probably given us a little bit of a cushion right now.
Let me, I have a question too. You said you, there was 400 and then there was the 89, right? So, what's going on with the rest, the 72 that's left?
But we didn't give a specific
Oh, you said 561 was the total positions that we, okay.
Total personnel.
Motion and second on the floor, is any other discussion?
One more. When it comes to the lowest salary individuals, and I know you talked about a percentage, everybody get a certain percentage, correct? Across the board? Or raised to the industry standard, right?
And it is not a broad brush because you all have given us pockets of money. So, we've targeted certain groups with some of that money. So, some may be much, much closer to that average of their peer cohort than this group. So, it is very different. For example, you just gave the police the 5,500. So, their move to get to that industry standard, as you referenced, it is much smaller than it would be for someone, say, in a public services position that did, has only gotten a cost of living and nothing else, they haven't been looked at for two or three years. So, it's not a broad brush. It's basically your strategy to get at each of those positions' average pay for a peer cohort.
And that could be part of that 89 we talked about too.
Yes, sir.
That reduces the compression and the inequity by doing it that way.
I have another question, is will directors be included in this?
They're part of the 89.
So, interesting, interesting you say that, ma'am. When we did this analysis, that there was a large majority of the directors that will not get increases, they're part of that 89 because there's a large percentage of those that are right at the average or above for their peer cohort.
And for those that are below, will something be added to theirs to
Yes, they will be part of the group.
Absolutely.
And then my last question, do you know approximately how many employees we have on a PIP?
I think we have three. Actually, I think it may be two now because one's successfully completed. But I would have to check that number for you and I'm happy to do so.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please raise your hand beside the table. All those opposed? Okay. That was a five to one. Yes, on that side. I'd like to thank Kimberly and HR for a fine job. I know it's their job, it's still a fine job.
Expensive hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to Tom, who's our expert on that.
He put a lot of work into it.
And remember that one of the, what the council had in their message was that we review this, you know, periodically to make sure that we don't
Yes, sir.
Slip.
It's my hope that I'll come to you at the beginning of the budget cycle and show you where we are against our peer cohort every year so that you can decide what you need to do to set that compensation number for the following year.
Could we, I think Dr. Washington mentioned about following the trend, like every month, every
Every quarter.
Every quarter.
We would love to bring to you an HR report every quarter that own, that, that would, now those numbers, we only get annually, but we can bring to you a HR report that shows attrition, people leaving, why they're leaving, what areas are leaving, where, you know, we can do turnover reports. We'd be happy to bring that to you every month, every quarter. As a matter of fact, we just started doing that at your last request and put together a template and we've already shown that to Ron and he's been very happy with what we're, we're doing. He thinks it's what you're asking for, so we're, we're ready and willing to provide you with that.
We have finance too, you're going to get quarterly reports, just like you would in a business to get, so you can stay up to date.
Thank you, Kimberly.
The only other thing I have before closing meeting is just a quick one-city moment. And we recently had the Magford Point observance, 80th anniversary of the first black Marines in the Marine Corps. Mayor's representative
Good job there, Michael. Good job. Thank you.
Very welcome.
Marine Corps Silent Grill Team. It was a good event, got good national coverage, which was very, very good. Mayor, council appreciate your hard work on this and we'll go to work on getting the budget amendment and we'll, with that, because we have the step plan for some employees, we'll end up having to bring a pay scale with that budget amendment that adjusts the steps because we handle the step plan outside of the normal way we make the salary adjustments. So, we'll, we'll bring a revised step plan pay scale along with the budget amendment.
Counsel, I know in our next meeting, Mr. Josh Ray, the appointed city manager, will be here on the 12th. But at this time, I'd like to personally thank Ron Massey for the job he's done so You, you've got a lot, you've still got a lot ahead of you as far as, you know, getting our new manager
A lot of knowledge.
Mr. Carter, thank you also. You've been in there too. Mr. Massey, this is his second tour of duty.
Learned a lot, two tours.
Just to think ahead a little bit, not to put a date or anything, but it might be a good idea for, after the new manager gets his feet wet, for the council to consider a council manager retreat.
Outstanding.
So, we can set some goals and get some common understandings about where the city's going, where it's been. So, that, put that in your future calendar. Motion to adjourn.
So, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed?